This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of March 5, 2019 was included in a notice sent to the newspapers, public record, and posted on the bulletin board in municipal building and has remained continuously posted as the required notices under the statute. In addition, a copy of the notice has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal department. Okay, we can go ahead and stand for the invocation of Vice President. And before we begin with the invocation, it was brought to our attention that this evening, Kohakon Township, former council president and mayor Salvatore Evangelia has passed away. So, we would like to hold it on the silence in honor of Mr. Evangelia. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community, and continue to remind us all that what we do here today, all we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Council President Polver?
Here.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Here.
Councilman Davis?
Here.
Councilwoman DeGrauena?
Here.
Councilman Lutz?
Here.
Okay, the very first item on the agenda this evening is for Jewel Gonzalez, who I believe, Miss Gonzalez, is not in attendance with us this evening, but her family had stated that she will be here at the next meeting, so we will go ahead and present her with the proclamation at that time. The next is a discussion with the Municipal Alliance, and I believe Mary Beth could not be here, so she had sent... Is she here?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll be sent. I'm sorry. Okay. So, how are you?
Good.
Doing well, thank you. So, I understand there was a little bit of confusion regarding, I guess you were under the impression the council had tabled some bills?
Yes.
Okay. That's cleared out now, it's gone out, they've signed the...
Have the bills all been paid? Because I think on the agenda, there's two questions about the bills.
There are, there are. But the outstanding ones, I spoke to Freeholder Kern, and I didn't even know about the bills, I don't want to introduce the council about those bills. I think they were still being held at the town of Phillipsburg?
I think so.
That they weren't sent out or signed, is that correct?
The POs didn't come back.
The POs didn't come back, so they don't get to us until they are, those bills are signed.
Okay.
Okay. Now, I know that there was another issue regarding the verbiage on the posters. I spoke with President Russo, and I also spoke with Freeholder Kern, who couldn't be here with us this evening, but had promised me that we could meet at his office any time. So, do you have any questions for us?
No, I think I can appreciate that sentiment, however, historically, so many things have been held at the birth fee center. When I first arrived, I mean, there was literally everything on the budget was being held at the birth fee center. So, you know, it's always been membership there. Big Brothers, Big Sisters was held there, wrestling, floor hockey, SAFE, which is the Substance Abuse Prevention Education, anything adding to do with it, because Dawn and DJ, DJ was the coordinator, when I took it over, we actually started to move some things away from there, and we continue to do that. We're holding things at SAFE, we hold things at the Family Success Center, but we still do hold some things. For instance, the Super Bowl party, which I believe might be the one in question.
Yes.
I don't know how they can do another, you know, we suggested other verbiage somewhat like annual fee, maybe membership is too big of a term, I don't know.
Right, so I think what we're looking to do, and I've spoken with Mr. Russo, and we're looking for a way to, for a workaround, because obviously with state grants, we can't limit.
I know.
And of course, the term "membership required" is a limiting factor.
Yes.
So, he's looking, he's the lawyer, so I'll let him try and figure that out.
Okay.
So, that's what we are, we are working on.
Okay. I would just say, as an advocate, I have been there for most of the major events, it does say "membership required," and people have come through the door, youth with a parent, and I've asked them to fill the form out. No money has exchanged hands, it's simply an insurance that, for instance, when the father leaves, the kid comes his head on the floor in the gym, I need a phone number to call, or somebody at the birth fee center needs a phone number to call. So, no money exchanges hands, it's more of a, when I've been there is what I'm trying to say at an event, so I just...
Are they...
I didn't know that.
If a child is injured there?
Yeah.
Are they covered under the youth center insurance?
I don't know. I don't know that.
Okay. Because I guess one of the questions I would have, I'm sorry, Mr. Davis, do you have that answer?
I do.
Okay.
So, what ends up happening when there's events like this, we're a huge collaborative partner, we include the prevention resources of Warren County. So, that collaborative partner, we do these initiatives through the birth fee center or any, any place, I just had to submit a certificate of, a certificate of insurance even to the, excuse me, LoPacCon Police Department, so that anything that is done with a collaboration that has CPR WC there as that partner, there is that insurer's coverage, because then they fall under the, all of the volunteers and what needs to happen at the event, that falls under whether it be our insurance and/or when you go through the, I'm not going to speak for the birth fee center, but at least that is covered, because we're the collaborative partner on a lot of these initiatives.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't know that either. You're good to have around.
I'm sorry?
You're good to have around.
Well, I mean, yeah, so what ends up happening is that when things get tabled and we, and things like this, it directly affects how we do implementation into the community as a whole, whether it be the South Warren Municipal Alliance and the Phillipsburg Municipal Alliance. When we have these events, we do what's called noncash match, meaning the things that they support under the municipal alliance can fall under our noncash match for the drug-free communities grant, and that grant is pretty significant, so every penny that does get paid and every initiative that does happen helps our grant so that we can continue to put these initiatives into the community. And it's all for prevention, this is all for substance abuse prevention, so every time something gets held up or I sit at the meetings and we can't move forward with an initiative, that hurts our grant as well. So, that's, you know, why I stand up here, not only because I'm a member of the municipal alliances that Mary Beth is, but as a collaborative partner and as a member of the county alliance steering committee that sits and helps with these approval of these initiatives, because anything that is done under a municipal alliance, that is done, and those approvals not only go through the county, but three levels at the county, it's got to go through the municipal alliance coordinator, and then it also needs the approval of CHICADA, which is the Governor's Council on Alcohol and Drugs. So, if any of those initiatives don't match up, if anything doesn't, if anything is off, not only do you have your municipal alliance, the county coordinator, you have your cast members, your VACADA members, your PACCADA members, you have then the Governor's Council of CHICADA members, all of these people are looking at the things that are going into communities to ensure that everything is on that up and up. So, when it gets to you guys, it's strictly procedural.
Right.
It's strictly procedural to be able to filter through the payments that need to be, that need to be had. So, with that being said, it's like when I started meeting and I'm now running the list of, one of my grants, just to be able to say that we have, we have some holdup with being able to establish a besters and noncash match value to that, that holds up my grant as well.
So, I think that the conflict that we had had, and when I spoke to Freeholder Kern, we came to the same conclusion, was that the limiting verbiage allows it to be discriminatory in nature, right? Saying "membership required" restricts the allocation of funds, and it's supposed to be unrestricted. I think that there has to be a workaround. I know that when I talked to President Russo, I had said, well, how about just making the statement that, you know, "membership required," but free memberships will be handed out at the meeting, something to that effect. And I think the problem that they had, and I can understand their point of view too, is, well, if they're handing out free memberships, why are they charging anyone $15, right? So, it's, we have to be able to speak sometime, we have to be able to meet somewhere in the middle ground, because your program is a wonderful program, but we don't want to become liable somewhere along the lines. Like, we did have a complaint, and that morning I brought the complaint to Mr. Russo's attention, as well as Freeholder Kern, and I believe he received the same complaint from the same parent. So, what we did was we proceeded from there. Ms. Ringo, if I had your number, I would have called you that day, I didn't have your number, unfortunately. I think it was Sunday, right? Yeah, because it was the Super Bowl party. I do believe this is something that we will be able to work out.
Well, what would be helpful, though, is if we had a council member that is able to be part of the committee on a regular basis, because then you get to see the initiatives that go out, how they get rolled out, so that we don't have these instances where something is tabled for a very long time based on a, or one word, one question, because you're already at the table, you already know what is coming, so that it's not sitting, it's not sitting longer, it's not sitting longer, because you may not get the right answer. Membership, that's an easy word, that we, is a very, very easy workaround place. Go to the meetings at the county level, and I keep seeing the same things happen, like this isn't going to pay, this isn't going to pay, this isn't going to pay.
Well, the last slew, I can honestly tell you, they didn't come before us.
Okay.
They were, they were POs that weren't signed and sent back to us, so we never even had the opportunity. I do see one for Faith Rockeroni here, that we did hold, because I wasn't sure what it was for. As a matter of fact, when it was submitted, it didn't even say the municipal alliance on it. So, what we did was, we sent that back to Mr. Merlo, and I don't know if Mr. Merlo is here, but Mr. Merlo did email us back the very next day and said that it was for the municipal alliance, and so we do plan on tabling that this evening, at least I do, and I'm hopeful that it goes through.
That it just goes through?
Yes.
Yeah, she's a consultant.
Okay.
The girl's not in group, actually.
Okay. It helps us when they're labeled, when they come through, unfortunately, because it's just a Faith Rockeroni consultant, consultant for one. I can honestly say that this council reads every line item on every bill.
Good.
So... Do you have any other questions? Do you want to yell at us?
No.
No? Okay.
No, it's not about yelling.
No, I'm teething.
We just want to get the work done.
We will.
You know, we want to get it done.
We will. President Russo and I have been in discussions actively since the Super Bowl Sunday, actually. I believe we will have something to discuss, so I'm optimistic.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
The bills listed.
Sewer utility fund, $3,143. Lending board trust fund, $220.10. Bridge development, $193. Section 8, $162.50. Regular bill list of $105,550.87. No section 8 grant payments, therefore tabled bills, William Benz, Phillipsburg UEZ, birth fee center, and state model grant. The prepaying bill list, state federal grants, $32,600, and revolving loan fund, $5,062.50 for a prepaid bill list of $37,662.50. Grantable bond fund, $155,438.87.
Excellent. Councilman Woods?
I'll make the motion without.
Thanks, Woods. There's a motion, is there a motion to accept?
Second.
So...
Councilman Davis?
No comments, I do.
Council Vice President?
Will we be untabling and adopting as amended?
I would like to, I would move to untable the birth fee center for, I'm sorry, Faith Rockeroni for $385, I believe the U Center was part of the municipal alliance as well. So, I would move to untable the UEZ, I'm sorry, the FYC, Faith Rockeroni.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGrauena?
Yes.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Polver?
Yes. Let's speak with CFO Merlo, who indeed has stated that the kiosk, the airtime, the billia for the kiosk airtime would be limited to one unit next month, so. Motion to approve? As amended? Roll call.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGrauena?
Yes.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Polver?
Yes. Okay, we have public comment on agenda items. Before stating any address for the record. Please. Yes.
On the agenda under table 2019-07, below, I refer to the body of the motion, section 3, which is in the February 19, from the February 19 agenda, that's not in this agenda. Praise and accolades, that's what this is all about right now. Finally, you are considering what, to me, seemed the cheapest and best solution to the police station problem, mainly rebuilding 675 Corliss at $6.5 million. You spent a lot of time looking at other stuff, on the face of it, because you've got to fix the building anyhow, and it's at the perfect location. This is good. Now, as to an temporary solution, which still exists, I've only heard hearsay here and there, but it seems like if you put one trailer near the communication tower for dispatcher, park the vehicles in that section on Fillmore, the alley Fillmore, that's marked for teachers, nobody's parking there anymore because there's no teachers, but it's big enough to park all those police cars. I still like the idea of taking them home at night, but there is the room. And a co-op deal with LoPacCon Police Department, very much like the co-op deal we have with courts presently. It seemed like that could be done quickest and cheapest, getting somebody out of that bad environment, still having a well dispatched police department, still having a place for arrests and all, and then go ahead, which I hope you've now concluded is the both good and cheap solution to the permanent police department at 675 Corliss, which is the first step being motion 2019-07, which is approval of less than the $6.5 million, specifying what you're doing there. So, I'm hoping that you're also in favor of that. Ooh, rahs and hat the names.
Thank you, your compliments. Very much. Questions on agenda items?
Evil person 94 Bowman Street in Phillipsburg. I have a question about 2019-09. Could someone explain what this is about? It's increasing the budget, establishing cap, it's difficult to understand what is in the...
The cap ordinance?
Yes.
It's really an accounting mechanism, so there's, as you know, a limit on what the municipalities can raise revenue or raise taxation by each year, and what the cap bank does is, it's an accounting mechanism by which the, like up to 3.5% over, put that in a kind of emergency fund, it has to be utilized within, I think, the two years of adoption of the ordinance, if there's an unexpected emergency expense that was not accounted for, they can access the cap bank and use the funds for that purpose.
Okay, so then the budget itself is done separately?
Yes.
This is not coordinated? Okay. And then the other thing, there was, I forget which one of us, it was, it was on where, it looks like there was a typo in the title, instead of execute, it had E-X-E-C-U-U. I lost track of what we're trying to do.
I think it's talking to Mr. Person, the consent resolutions, the consent agenda order.
46, 2019-46.
Yeah.
Application and, and execute?
Grant application, execute, yes.
The ordinance for the second reading for the handicap parking, I just briefly told you the conversation, I just had with a police officer who stated that there's no way they can enforce that, that anybody that's handicapped can park in a handicap spot. Now, I explained to the officer that in my situation with the neighbor, it's everybody in the household that's using that particular car, parking in that spot when the handicapped person is not with them. He said there's no way for them to enforce that. So, it appears to me is this is all a big waste of time.
Council. I'll talk to the chief.
So, are the current handicap spots going to be notified that only the person who's handicapped is allowed to be utilizing that spot?
That's the plan.
That they will get notification, so this way they can't say, oh, I didn't know that?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
We'll have to make sure they're not...
So, in my case, when I have video of other people in the household using it, will the police utilize that video as proof that they're abusing it?
I would have to defer to council again.
I can't speak about what the police will do when enforcing the ordinance. That's, that's a police issue.
All righty, thank you.
Me too. Is there anyone else? Next up is the mayor and administrative reports, mayors in attendance, give a report, mayor?
No, I'm not.
Okay. If you can move to the sewer subcommittee, give a report.
Waiting for a meeting. Send a report.
Redevelopment subcommittee?
Council President, as you're aware, I'm in daily talks with councilmen Woods and what we're doing and what we're planning for revitalization of downtown and beyond. There are some things that are, we have, we are intra-personal timeline going on here that we could then share into an intra-personal timeline with the, with the council, and we feel the time is ready, in addition to any developer, builder, financial backing we have and plans to go along with that. At this time, I will say it is very strong plans, and that in the very near future, we will have a presentation at least by the developer and the RDT, that would like to come in here. We will at that time ask permission, once councilman Woods and I are satisfied, this is someone for the betterment of the town, that we put forward, is the last thing we want to do, and you know the term that I use often is throwing spaghetti on a wall and see if it sticks. There'll be no spaghetti coming out of councilman Woods and I's kitchen, it would be a nice statement with potatoes and fixings. There we go, if that's where councilman Woods, who likes the magic potatoes. As you can see, we, a bit of jocularity in there, because we are uber excited and confident on what is going to come forth out of our subcommittee and forward to the council.
Excellent. Does anybody else in the panel have questions for the, for the subcommittee? No? Okay. Regarding the landlord tenant subcommittee, I can say that we had our first meeting, the alliance is very productive, I would like to expand the committee and I think we're on the right track, so I will have a much more in-depth report at the next council meeting for council. And that being said, we can move forward to the mayor selection for bottom council, who is Wildens, Golden, Spitzer, the attorney general. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
I'll move second. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGrauena?
Yes.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Polver?
Yes. Okay, the next is the mayor selection for an auditing firm, CPA Soffley, Clooney, is in motion?
Send move.
Second.
Second, great councilman, we'll move to a discussion. Roll call.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGrauena?
Yes.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Polver?
Yes. Okay. The next is the ordinance for a second reading, ordinance of the town of Phillipsburg, County of Warren, State of New Jersey, amending the town code in order to create a new chapter 56 firearms and weapons of the code of the town of Phillipsburg, it would be ordinance number 2019-05. Send move.
Second.
Right, so we will open it up to the public for discussion. Sorry, a discussion on this particular ordinance? Closed public discussion? Panel? Anything? Councilman Davis?
Leader.
Councilman? Good sir. Roll call.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGrauena?
Yes.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Polver?
Yes. Ordinance number 2019-05, that is passed. Ordinance number 2019-06, ordinance of the town of Phillipsburg, County of Warren, State of New Jersey, amending chapter 414 parking handicap code of the town of Phillipsburg, can I get a motion?
Send move.
Second?
Second.
Open it up for public hearing.
Joe Miners, 392 Main Street, I'd just like to say one thing once again, it's not a bad idea, putting down veterans or something like that, however, it has, it's going to be a problem eventually, I don't know how long it will take. The problem is, way back when, we had draft armor.
Mr. Mine?
Yes.
This is not the veterans parking ordinance, is this for a handicap parking?
Oh, where's the veteran's board?
All the way down to the bottom of the table.
Oh, I think I'll skip my blind.
You can come back up later, how's that? Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Dustin Pierce, 118, yeah, wrong street. All right, 111 Sycrave Street. So, this is going to be the, I request a parking spot, so it's my parking spot and I can use it, right, if I was handicapped.
You're the disabled individual, yeah.
Right, so how are you going to do that? Like, I have four cars registered to me, I own those cars, so are you telling me one of those cars can use that parking spot, or?
Well, you can provide it with a placard with a number.
Okay.
And the sign itself would also be stamped with a number, so it's your spot.
Okay, go ahead. It's still going to be an issue if I keep moving it through my cars, or... Right, it'll be, if I was handicapped.
You're the disabled individual.
Right, so how are you going to do that? Like, I have four cars registered to me, I own those cars. So, are you telling me one of those cars can use that parking spot or?
Well, you have, you can provide it with a placard with a number.
Okay.
And the sign itself would also be stamped with a number. So, it's your spot.
Okay, good. It's still going to be an issue if I keep moving it through my cars? Or is it going to be like something else?
Yeah, a placard. You have a placard with a number.
Right.
So, you take that placard.
Okay.
You put it in that car.
Right.
You register that car with Phillipsburg Police Department.
Because there are going to be a fee for that.
There is not going to be a fee.
So, or, so there's going to be like reserved parking for not being, so. All right, go.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Is there any none? Councilman Lutz, do you have any?
No.
Councilman Davis?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman DeGraalma?
Yes, sir.
Council Vice President McVay?
Good sir.
Roll call.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGraalma?
Yes.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVay?
Yes.
Council President Volfer?
Yes. Ordinance for 2019-06 has successfully passed. We'll talk to the chief tomorrow? Sure.
In 20 days? Okay. Ordinance number 2019-08, an ordinance for the town of Phillipsburg, County of Warren, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter 105 Police Department Article 4, all duty police officers in order to set a range for the rate of pay.
So move.
Can I give a second?
Second.
Okay, we can open this up to the floor for discussion. There's seen none, we can close the public discussion. Counsel? Councilman Lutz?
Nothing.
Councilman Davis?
Nothing.
Councilwoman DeGraalma?
Nothing.
Council Vice President?
Good sir.
Roll call.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGraalma?
Yes.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVay?
Yes.
Council President Volfer?
Yes.
Okay. We move forward to the ordinance of your first reading as an ordinance number 2019-08 has successfully passed. Ordinance for 2019-09, calendar year 2019, ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriations and to establish a cap bank.
So move.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Councilman Davis, can I get a second?
Second.
Councilwoman DeGraalma, second. Okay. Roll call.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGraalma?
Yes.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVay?
Yes.
Council President Volfer?
Yes. Ordinance number 2019-09 successfully passed for three.
Ordinance number 2019-10, ordinance for the town of Phillipsburg, County of Warren, State of New Jersey, deleting Chapter 248 Demonstrations and Special Events of the Cat Code of the Town of Phillipsburg. A motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Is, what's the, can someone please explain the genesis of this proposal?
Is anyone?
I can take a stab at it. I'm still trying to wrap my head around why some people pay, why some people don't, why some ordinances and resolutions are passed and they're not enforced against this code.